Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Someone?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll start off with comments from the public, if there are any tonight. Okay, no comments from the public. So presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Something that is always so much fun that we look forward to. Quiz Bowl. So we will invite Peter Panti, Kate Hickson, and NHS students up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we need some more chairs.
Yes.
We have them right here.
Okay.
Do you want us to move down?
Yeah, please split right down the middle.
Sure.
The buzzer being here.
Yep.
So some people will be sharing buzzers.
Oh. Okay.
Zona, do you want to come share?
I'll come on that end.
Okay. If he goes that way, away. Just don't want to fall off here, Zona. There we go. Okay.
Would she fall in off?
They're all moving my coat.
Yeah. Push her up and keep her up there.
Be on the buzzer.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five. One, two, three. Can you? You can pull that one there.
Alabama.
Here, throw it to me, Dina.
Five.
Okay.
Is this enough?
No.
No. There we go. There we go.
Ouch.
You've got our own mics, too.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome, everybody.
First group is going to be our seniors.
Okay.
Who, many of whom have been with Quiz Bowl for the whole three or four years. Couple newcomers, but what we'd like them to do is say who they are and either where they are planning to go to school or what schools they're considering at this point.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'm Dino Weatherly, and I'll be attending Wellesley College this fall.
I'm Isaiah Williams, and I am considering the Eastman School of Music in Rochester, New York.
I'm Lucy Bizzette. I have no idea where I'm going to college.
I'm Liam Cannell.
I got into Stanford. It's pretty great.
Yeah. Pretty great.
I'm Liam Cannell, and I'm considering Boston College.
I'm Bana Walker, and I've been considering Northeastern University.
Great. Thank you for coming tonight.
We don't introduce ourselves?
I'm sorry, I couldn't introduce you.
Do you want us to introduce ourselves?
Yeah. Come on.
Sure.
By all means.
Want to start?
I'm Zona Butler. I guess I'll get.
I'm Paulie Proch, and I've been accepted to the school committee.
Tim Maupry.
Jen Iller.
And Natalie Gattmans.
And another senior. And where are you going to go to school, Natalie?
I don't know yet, but I'm considering Villanova University.
Okay. We're going to do two 15-minute rounds, and so you'll be the timekeeper. All right.
Can we please make sure our buzzers work, because I don't think mine worked last year.
All right. All right. Who's going to do the reset? Dina?
Dina.
Dina?
Yeah.
All right.
Are you going to try the other two, three?
I tried mine.
Oh, good.
Sure. I have two.
Oh, they're shelling down there.
Oh, there's five buzzers.
Okay.
I can use this one.
Yeah. I should have that very old buzzer.
Ready.
For Dina. It's the only chance we're going to get to hit the button, so just give us a minute.
All right. In one... Oh, let me just say this.
Wait, the rules.
We tried to simplify it. All questions are going to be 10 points. If you ring in early and are incorrect, I will read the entire question for the other team. There will be no negative points. That gives you a chance, Tim.
He's on fire, isn't he?
"In one work by this author, a philosopher is compared to a gadfly who stings a lazy horse." This man wrote about the nature of piety in "You, Thee, Fro" and about immortality of the soul in "Phido." Name this student of Socrates.
Plato.
That is correct. "This man's new life movement was an attempt to repopularize the teachings of Confucius. After fleeing the 1949 siege of Chengdu, this head of the Kuomintang established and led a new republic on Taiwan."
Chiang Kai-shek.
That's correct. "This constellation represents a figure that points toward its neighbor Scorpius and contains an asterism known as the teapot. The center of the Milky Way lies in the direction of what const..."
Little Dipper?
"...what constellation, which represents a centaur and is called the Archer?"
Pegasus.
You can't... You can't answer.
No, can't answer.
Yeah, we can't.
It's only for this team.
We can't answer because we have a team member that answers.
But I'd give her the point anyway, because it was good.
Do that.
I thought it was a line.
Any answer from?
Liam, buzz in.
You might as well.
Sagittarius?
That's correct.
There we go.
Great.
"In one show that airs on this network, a company named Pied Piper wins a quote 'disrupt' cup for creating a compression algorithm." This network that airs, Silicon Valley, also broadcasts a show based on books.
HBO.
That is correct. "This man's Opus 25 is dedicated to Marie D'Agou and contains the quote 'Ocean Etude,' which is named for its arpegios. The November uprising inspired his C minor..."
Chopin? Chopin?
Did you ring it?
I did.
Oh, I couldn't hear. That is correct. "This city's world islands are bits of sand shaped in the form of a world map. This city is also home to the world's tallest..."
Dubai.
That is correct. "The loser of this battle had three weeks earlier defeated Harold Kadrata at the Battle of Stamford Bridge. Scenes from it are depicted on the Bayou Tapestry. Harold Godwin's sin was defeated by the Norman forces of William..."
William the Conqueror.
"...of William the Conqueror at what 1066 battle." Might as well take a guess.
Battle of Hastings.
That is correct.
Should have listened. I thought I had it.
"Toma Gorov's axioms for these values imply that they range from zero to one inclusive and that they add directly for mutually exclusive events. Conditional examples of these values obey Bayes' theorem. Name these values that describe the chance of an event occurring."
Probability?
That's correct. "In one of this man's poems, the speaker hopes to see his quote 'pilot' face to face when he has quote 'crossed the bar.' He wrote, quote, 'There's not to reason why; there's but to do and die,' in a poem depicting a ride into quote 'the valley of death.' Name this poet of the charge of the light brigade."
Tennyson.
That is correct. "In 1968, this former legislator led a namesake brigade to Washington, D.C. to protest the Vietnam War. In 1941, this representative for Montana's first district was the only member of the House to vote against entering World War II. Name this first woman elected to Congress." Jeanette Rankin. "In July 2015, this nation was criticized by China for letting in over 150 ethnic Uyghurs. That same month, it announced a plan to cooperate with the U.S. in creating an ISIS-free zone in northern Syria. Name this nation where Recap Erdogan rules from Ankara."
Turkey.
Turkey is correct. "In 1959, this man expanded a guide to writing authored by William Strunk, which was subsequently published as The Elements of Style. A book by this author depicts the greedy rat Templeton, who helps Wilbur to escape slaughter. Name this author of Charlotte's..."
EB.
EB.
Webb.
Correct. "This man's namesake const..." Wait a minute. I think that doesn't make sense, but I'll read it as it's written. "This man's namesake constant times the Boltzmann constant equals the ideal gas constant." I guess that makes sense. "The volume of gas is directly proportional to its number of particles, according to his namesake law. The number of particles in a mole is what Italian scientist..."
Avogadro.
That is correct. "During the 1940s, this character was played by Basil Rathbone in such films as The Scarlet Claw. This character occasionally visited Diogenes, the Diogenes Club, to meet with his brother Mycroft. Name this detective who lived..."
Sherlock Holmes.
Correct. "During the Civil War, this state was the site of the Tullahoma Campaign. Fort Henry and Fort Donelson were located in this state, which was governed until 1865 by Andrew Johnson. Battles at Chattanooga and Shiloh were fought in what state?"
What's that mean? I'm sorry, Tennessee?
Tennessee is correct. "This state's capital city is overlooked by Camelback Mountain, which was sacred to the Ho'okum people. This state's Mount Aldi is the headwaters of the little Colorado River, which borders on its painted desert. Name this southwestern state whose capital is Phoenix." I don't know who.
Uh, yeah.
Arizona.
Arizona's right. I just couldn't tell who it was.
It was Zona from Arizona.
Zona from Arizona. Of course, Zona. "This man wrote 'I will not cease for mental flight' in the poem Jerusalem. In 1794, pardon me, a 1794 collection by this poet portrays, quote, 'contrary states of the human soul with poems like, quote, 'The Chimney Sweeper, The Sick Rose, and The Lamb.'" What poet wrote Songs of Innocence and Experience? Okay, that would be William Blake. "In June 2015, in this state, Sergeant J. Cook shot a criminal in the city of Constable. Gene Palmer was arrested for hating two men at this state's Clinton Correctional Facility. Richard Matt and David Swett escaped from prison in what state?"
New York.
New York is correct. Von Ebbener's glands and the carotid glands both produce this material.
Saliva.
That is correct. Reproductions of this artwork are shown in Thirty or Better Than One. A goatee is etched into a postcard of it in the LHOQ. Mountains behind a loggia can be seen in this painting of Francesco Del Giaccondo's wife that captures her smile. Name this portrait."
Mona Lisa?
That is correct. This author wrote that, quote, "The greatest treason was," quote, "to do the right deed for the wrong reason in the play Murder in the Cathedral." He described Saados restaurants in a 1915 poem that begins, "Let us go then, you and I."
T. S. Eliot.
That is correct. "This island's pale of settlement was vulnerable to raids from the Wicklow Mountains. Injustices against tenant farmers led to the land war on this island, whose northern section is known as the Sixth County."
Tarlo.
That is correct. "This physicist analyzed the nature of light by using a pair of prisms to split and recombine white light, an experiment that he described in his 1704 book Optics. Every action has an equal and opposite react."
Isaac Newton?
That is correct.
Everything is a...
Okay. Now, in the... In this next section, there'll be little group categories.
Lucy's.
Lucy's favorite. So, for the next three questions. During World War II, this country's monarch was Victor Emmanuel III, who advocated in favor of his son following the war. Name this European..."
Italy.
That is correct. Real power was held in Italy during World War II by this..."
Mussolini.
That is correct. This was the name of Italy's final monarch, who briefly ruled in 1946. It is also the name of a king of Italy who was assassinated in 1900. That would be Umberto. Okay. Now you will, in the next three questions, name these real and fictional mayors. Michael Henshaw auctions off his wife and baby daughter before becoming the title mayor of a Thomas Hardy novel named for this fictional city. Okay, that would be the mayor of Castleville. This man was elected mayor of New York City in 2013 after he promised to end the police's stop-and-frisk policies. That would be Bill de Blasio. I think you have a much better chance at this one. A diplomatic sash and top hat are always seen on this mayor, who has been called the most corrupt politician in a McDonaldland. That would be Mayor McCheese.
That was in, like, the 70s.
Yeah.
Okay. This player concluded his playing career with the Washington Wizards in 2003. Name this shooting guard who won six NBA titles.
Michael Jordan.
That is correct. Although inappropriate. Jordan played for this NBA team along with such teammates as starting...
Chicago Bulls.
That is correct. Jordan was taken with the third pick of the 1984 NBA draft. The first player chosen was this African-born center nicknamed "The Dream," who went to the Houston Rockets.
Kareem Abdul-Jabbar.
No, it would be Hakeem Olajuwon. Okay.
All right.
And the score is?
Kill this.
No.
The school committee thirteen, and I just seen yours twelve.
Oh.
Wow. Wow.
She's about as over now.
Good job, Pauline.
Thank you.
We were so...
We were so good.
All right. Nice job.
Good job. Very good.
Great game. We have the English.
Get as old as I am. We can work out somebody.
I love you.
Get up here. Don't trip, kid. No, no, no.
Want to come up? All get our own buzzer?
Yeah.
Oh, we need one more. Oh, we do.
But we might need a few. Let's see what we got. Sorry.
We've got three plus one.
Okay, so we have one night.
Martin doesn't have one?
No. Yes. They only need one. Okay. I'll land the buzzer, why not? Because I won't be doing much myself.
One.
I don't like this spot. It's too centered.
Happy birthday.
Oh, this isn't fair. They're bringing back...
This isn't fair. Well, don't worry.
Okay, this is under protest. We... This is an official protest.
Jackie, your own buzzer.
Yeah.
I'll try it.
Ramon is the senior who has been coming recently. So if you guys would introduce yourselves and say what class you are, and then the administration can introduce themselves. Okay?
All right. I'm Jackie McGrath, and I am a junior.
I'm James Holmes, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Phaedra Plank, and I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Evan Borzler, and I'm a freshman. I'm Ramon Portita, and I'm a senior.
Okay. And on the administrative side, you guys want...
John Buckey, Northeastern, class of 2014.
Michael Cozort.
Jean Witt.
Kelly Cooney.
Peter Cohen.
Okay. Are you still timing?
I'll be timed.
Oh, okay. All right.
You didn't trust me now?
No, I don't.
Well, that was pretty neatly...
I know. He'll be here all night.
"In July 2015, this European country repealed its blasphemy law on the urging of the Pirate Party. The world's first openly gay head of state, Johanna Wu..."
Australia?
No.
Nope. Oh, shit. Never mind.
"Seer Daughter served as prime minister of this country. The 2008 failure of its three largest banks led to strict capital controls on its currency, the krona. In 2010, the, oh boy, Aofya La Yocudel volcano erupted in what country whose capital is Reykjavik?"
Oh, I see. Nice one.
There we go.
Oops, pal, listen more. And not say it.
"In a dream, this man finds an axe in the street and gives it to his mother. In one story, he is demoralized after discovering he has slept next to seven loaves of bread. A serpent steals from him a plant that grants immortality, which he learned about from the utnapihtum. He defeats the bull of heaven with his companion Ankidu. Name this..."
Gilgamesh.
That is correct. "In response to this event's controversial ninth resolution, one participant declared that it will, quote, 'make us look ridiculous.' This event was organized in response to its planners' poor experiences at the 1840 World Anti-Slavery Convention, where they had been not permitted to speak. Frederick Douglass attended this event, which produced the Declaration of Sentiments. Name this 1848 Women's Rights..."
Seneca Falls.
Yes. "These people wear ornate, quote, 'suits of lights' that weigh 15 to 20 pounds. Low, slow passes called veronicas are performed by these people, who also perform more dramatic faroles from a kneeling position. Mounted picadors..."
Matadors?
That is correct, or bullfighters. "In one poem, this author refused to be a pet lamb in a sentimental farce. Another work by this poet observes that, quote, 'hedge crickets sing,' and, quote, 'gathering swallows Twitter during the title, quote, 'season of mists and mellow fruitfulness.'" This poet of ode on indolence and to autumn also addressed a Sylvan historian in a work that states, "Beauty is truth."
Charles Baudelaire.
No.
Oh, God. Oh, damn.
Beauty is truth. Truth is beauty. Name this romantic poet of ode to a Grecian girl. Any comments?
Go for it.
I don't know if it's cute.
Well, say something.
Say it. Just say it.
Sure. Keats.
Is correct.
Thank you, Sophie, for doing that.
"This first commercial use of this substance was in toothbrush bristles under the trade name, quote, 'Exton.' Its original form is often designated, quote, 'six-six,' because it was made by combining two six-carbon molecules. In World War II, American production of this polymer was commandeered by the military after Japan shut off silk exports."
Nylon?
Nylon is correct. Early leaders of this regime issued permits for trade carried in red seal ships and were advised by the Englishman William Adams. This government's last ruler, Yoshinobu, resigned after the Bocheen War. Its founder established it after defeating the Western Army at the Battle of Sekahara. That founder, Ieishu, later built Ido Castle. I'm going to finish it for the other people. Name this last shogunet which preceded the Ieji Restoration. Okay, that would be Tokugawa. And it is Japan, but that wasn't...
Yeah.
"This city's Port Jackson, the largest natural harbor in the world, is crossed by a single iconic steel arch bridge named the Code Hanger. Mondi Beach is a popular tourist attraction in this city that lies just north of Botany Bay, where James Cook landed in 1770. Its skyline includes the Harbor Bridge."
Sydney?
Sydney is correct. "The third person who held this title established men's and women's missionary societies called the Manji and the Peri. The tenth person with this title emerged from a tent holding a bloody sword during his founding of the Kalso. This title was first held by a man who proclaimed, 'There is no Hindu, no Muslim,' and it was permanently given to the Grand Sahib in 1708. Provide us this title for leaders of Sikh."
Raja?
No. And guess it's guru. In a play by this author, Kailo swears to fulfill his father's dying request by marrying the captive Iole. The title character of another play by this author throws himself on a sword after he is tricked into massacring sheep.
Oh, my God.
This play, right of the... This play, right of the women of Trokeys and Ajax, also wrote about a king's daughter who violates Creon's order against burying Polynices. Name this ancient Greek writer.
Sophocles?
That is correct. A, quote, "bomb spike affects the calibration of this technique." Its measurements can be biased by limestone or recent atmospheric exposure. Willard Libby developed this technique, which is based on a substance emitting an electron.
Geiger, counter?
No, I'll finish it for the rest. Emitting an electron to form nitrogen. It is most useful for samples younger than 60,000 years, about ten half-lives. Name this technique that measures the presence.
Carbon dating?
That is correct. In March 2015, this man went to Guatemala to lecture on USAID, leading Orrin Hatch to take this man's usual seat during Benjamin Netanyahu's address to Congress. In 2014, this man controversially, controversially, claimed Turkey's president had admitted to failures in border security. In May 2015, this man's son, a former Attorney General of Delaware, died of brain.
Joe Biden.
Joe Biden is correct. This man spared the commando George Lane from execution after meeting him for tea. He led a failed siege of Tobruk and later defeated US forces at the Battle of Kasserine Pass. In 1943, he was tasked with fortifying the Atlantic Wall a year after he lost to Bernard Montgomery at the Battle of El Alamein. The Africa Corps was led by what?
Rubble.
That is correct. Fifty-one Peg B was the first of these objects to be detected by Doppler spectroscopy. The Kolo-T satellite used the transit method to find these objects, which are generally colder and less dense than round dwarves. The TESS mission, or T E S S, I don't know which is correct, will build upon the Kepler satellite's detection of these objects, which include hot Jupiters and super-Earths. Name these objects found around stars.
Exoplanets?
Yes, that was heard and accepted. In one novel by this author, the protagonist mentions the, quote, "abominable selfishness of a refusal to play lawn tennis while breaking off her engagement to the pompous Cecil Weiss." This author also wrote a novel in which a visit to the Maribor Caves causes Adela Quested to mistakenly accuse Dr. Aziz of attempted sexual assault. Name this English author of A Room with a View and a Passage to India. That would be E.M. Forster. This man's ranch in the Purdonalees, on the Purdonalees River, was the site of a practical joke involving driving an amphibious car into a lake. As a Senate Majority Leader, he intimidated colleagues by standing uncomfortably close when speaking, a process called, quote, "the treatment." He won his first elected office as a congressman for Texas.
LBJ?
LBJ is correct. Tetra-cycline instructs myosin to kill bacteria by inhibiting this process. In prokaryotes, F2 or EFTU works as an elongation factor in this process that begins with formal mat and ends at amber, ochre, or opal signals. Before this process occurs, introns are removed and poly-atales are added to mRNA. Name this process in which ribosomes, quote, "read mRNA to make proteins" and which follows.
The Krebs cycle.
And which follows transcription.
Replication, DNA replication?
No, it's translation. Translation. This number is the street address of London's, quote, "Gurken Building" on St. Mary Axe. Sweden's Gustavus Adolfus died in the Battle of Lutzen during a war of this many years, which ended with the Peace of Westfalia. According to the Gospel of Matthew, betraying Jesus resulted in Judas being paid this many pieces of silver.
One hundred?
No, for the other side. Tina Fey starred in an NBC sitcom by one number followed by the word.
Thirty.
One more question.
Okay.
Last question.
This leader once declared, quote, "whether you like it or not, history is on our side." This leader sent tanks to overthrow the reformist government of Imran Nagy, which prevented Hungary from leaving the Warsaw Pact. Later, he told Western ambassadors, "We will bury you."
Khrushchev?
That is correct. And return to the scorekeeper.
NHS eight and school committee seven.
Well done.
All right. Good game.
What do I do? Can I just pull out some water?
Thank you so much for coming.
It just pulls straight out. Straight. I shouldn't want to break anything.
Yeah, it's just got to fall.
I know, like every year.
Zona, good job.
Zona pulls out Arizona.
I thought that was a give me that.
Sure. Who's here? Who's here when you got there?
The author of, um...
Charlotte Webb.
Charlotte Webb.
Charlotte Webb.
My favorite book. I like, yeah.
And Chattanooga, Tennessee question. I know Chattanooga.
Oh, I knew LBJ.
I knew Ramon and I just froze.
It's good fun.
Almost okay.
I know. I know.
School committee killed.
He won by one.
It just seemed like he was.
Did we win, right?
We did. We did.
You did. You did.
You did. You did.
Zona came through a couple.
Thank you, Zona. Thank you. All right, moving on. That was so much fun. To our bullying update, so can we have, um... We'll start at the elementary school, if that's okay.
I don't, if I can interrupt, I'm not sure that we need to take the time to bring each of them up. I think they gave a report there at the elementary school. There were no incidents, nor have they had any incidents to investigate. The intermediate school did have one reported case that warranted a full investigation, which was done but determined that it was not, did not constitute bullying because it wasn't repetitive for time, so it was more of a student conflict. At the middle school, they had one formal report and investigated it and again determined that it was a conflict, but did not meet the requirements of bullying. And there were no incidents reported at the high school, nor were there any investigations, so.
One question I have, is there a set state guideline that helps you constitute what's bullying? And is that in part of our policy manual?
Yep, it is in the, it is in the manual and it gives examples. I think what the key is, is it repetitive in nature? And oftentimes, students will have conflicts, but it's not the same child instigating over another child continually, so.
And maybe could we just have someone or some of the principals speak up to what they're doing proactively to help prevent bullying? Because I know there's a lot that goes on every day and this is great to hear that there are, you know, no reported cases throughout the district. So I just want everyone to know the hard work that goes into you being so proactive.
A big piece of it, that the high school falls into cyberbullying and I think our cell phone policy of asking students to turn them off and put them away during the school day. At the end of the first year of that policy, the school resource officer weighed in that we had fewer incidents of kids using Snapchat and other forms of social media to harass or bully kids. So I think that's one of the things that we've done is to try and limit cell phone use during the academic day.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to, I know there's a lot that goes on and, sure.
Peter, if you want to. So at the elementary school, we used responsive classroom. And so that's taught to everyone. We spend the first six weeks really working through how a responsive classroom works and teaching the children about their own accountability and actions. And then we have guidance counselors who go into classrooms every other week and teach skills in a proactive way rather than react to situations. And then we have our Student Support Center and social work where we, those situations that might occur, we have conversations with students and work them out that way.
I think I'd add, the other thing FOMC has supported almost every year has been the Boston troop that comes in and does programs and helps children understand what it looks like at various levels. And I think that's been a very successful way of teaching children.
And I think it's so important that it's something that is constantly brought up in a really proactive way to help our students know exactly what bullying is, how to handle it, and what they can do if they feel like they're in a situation. And how to get help.
Especially with the high school level being that so much of attention is now happening outside of school. When there are situations that happen outside of school, is that reported as part of the school or is it all of a sudden off road?
So I'll speak to that and then anybody else can jump in. There are situations that happen outside of school. The nexus for school to step in and take any action would be, does it carry over from outside to inside? If it doesn't carry over from outside school to inside, then it's an issue between students at home or families to solve. But if we start to see that it is having an effect on relationships in school, then the principals will take action.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Safety and security update.
Well, we've given you a one-page sort of synopsis of some of the safety and security measures that we've taken in the district. I'm not going to go down and enumerate all of them, but I will say that something we've done this year is that each month, the principal and building supervisor and school resource officer will tour their school. They go through a several-page checklist indicating any sorts of items that they think might be a concern. It could be as simple as a cover on a, um... on a socket is broken or it could be something hanging down. Really, it could be anything that might pose any kind of risk. They do that inside and outside. They go around the playground exterior of the building looking at things that might be, present problems, the parking lots. And so they do a pretty thorough, those are turned in to our facilities director, Diane O'Neill, once a month by each school. And then she'll put together and bring that to the Safety and Security Meet Committee that meets probably quarterly now. We've done a lot of things at each of the buildings and things come to us in many ways. I know we were in a meeting with Zona and she mentioned how dark it was behind the middle school.
That was me.
By the, okay, cafeteria. The two of you were in that meeting. And so went to Diane and now there are lights. There are lights on the corner of that.
Yes.
So, you know, we try to, try to stay on top of it that way. The visitor check-in policy is observed closely. We've had one and are about to have a second intruder.
Drill.
Drill. And that's where we find somebody unknown to school community who, but is known to the school resource officer, will come in, gain access to the building and see how far they can go before somebody says, you know, "I don't see that you have an ID. May I escort you to the office or can I help you go someplace?" So that, I think that sort of keeps us on our toes. We have the vestibule, of course, at the new school and the intermediate school. I think that's been a nice addition for the last year. And if and when capital is approved in the budget cycle, we will be doing a vestibule inside the high school. We'll, it'll, we'll take off some of that interior space so that people come into the entrance of the school, check in before they're allowed to go further into the school. So doing a lot of things. We had a Safe Roots to School meeting, talking about where crossing strips should be. We've added signs in those strips. I'm sure you've driven by them on your approach to school. We've added security cameras. So we take a lot of measures. We don't, we won't report out at a school committee meeting all of the measures that we take because we want to hold on to a few of those measures and not, you know, publicize it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I was just very impressed when we got the list of just how much is covered. It was amazing. Thank you.
And this is just really one, this is just a small portion of everything that is covered and that comes up, which is pretty remarkable.
And I should note, too, we know that, but not all the public knows that the community has added a second school resource officer so that we have two resource officers for the four schools now. And it's a visible presence and a help. And they go out to recess and they go out to, you know, bus time and they're at lunch, having lunch with kids. And really reminds me back to the day of officer-friendly and creating relationships so that people, so the children are comfortable going to a police officer when they see a need to.
Does anyone have any comments? Zona? One of the biggest things I have to say is when my oldest, who's in ninth grade, first started, anyone could come and go, really, from the building. The doors were pretty much open and it just, I have such a sense of security knowing that my children are in a building. And really, everybody is very careful and aware of making sure that people are checking in. They're very vigilant, which I think we should all feel very good about.
It's a delicate balance because you still want to make the school a friendly rural school that, you know, adults and parents are comfortable coming into. Um, but in this day and age, we have to balance that with...
I appreciate all the measures taken at each school, so thank you. All right, moving on to discussion of votes to be taken. May I have a vote to accept the donation from First Congregational Church to NCS for Education and Outreach Programs in the amount of $700?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you just let me know if I need to read any of these? Okay, thank you. Um, may I have a vote to accept the donation from Poet's Corner Press LLC to NCS in the amount of $87?
Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For some reason, I thought it was Nate Heath's book, plus, did I read that wrong?
Can you repeat that again?
I, I thought I recalled it being from Nate Roberts. Oh, he is...
It is. He's supposed to...
Yep.
Um, all in, aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, may I have a vote to accept the donation from Josh and Bernadette Brown to, let's see, Will Brown Donor Advised Fund to the NCS Learn to Swim program in the amount of $1,000?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to accept the donation from Nantucket Wine and Food to the NHS culinary program in the amount of $10,000?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a vote to approve the NHS Diversity in Spanish Club field trip to New York City on May 17th through the 20th?
Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How is that funded?
Uh, it says, "School funds, fundraising, student family contributions, and friends." May I have a motion to approve December 19th, 2017, meeting minutes?
Will you approve?
Second, anyone? Uh, I guess it will have to be Zona.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve December 12th workshop meeting session minutes?
Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor? And any questions or comments on the, um, transfers and invoices? May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the superintendent's report.
You have the enrollment report, um, which is, um, actually one less student than we had in December. You have the entries and withdrawals down below, you can see that that continues to ebb and flow. A lot of that from, after asking, administration is, um, remains, you know, some housing, um, issues for some families. And, um, the high school is the largest of the four schools now, with 534 students. That's all I have on there.
Any questions?
Remind me again, please, what the PG is?
PG would be for a child who, um, it stands for postgraduate, but, um, probably a child who might be, uh, have special needs, who continues and can continue up until his or her birthday at age 22. So, some students, um, continue.
Okay. Would that also...
Till they age out.
Count students who didn't, um, complete the MCAS requirement?
No, they're still in the other numbers.
They are, okay.
Zona, any questions or comments? All right, moving to on the horizon.
On the horizon, um, reminder that we, we do sort of our double meeting, at the next meeting on January 16th, we will open up with a budget hearing at 6 o'clock. That usually concludes in the first, uh, half an hour, and then we'll go in to, um, our regular session where we will have second quarter budget update by, um, Martin, who will give us, um, the state of financial affairs. Um, and then, we actually need to move, have a motion to approve school improvement plans. We never did that, um, although there were revisions after we discussed, so we will, we will put that on the agenda. Um, and then FinCom is scheduled for the 18th, which is early this year, um, and I believe that that's 4:30. And then in, um, early February, um, Mike Corden and Jean Witt will talk about some of the changes in science and social studies, um, curricula in the Commonwealth, and how that will affect the Nantucket Public Schools moving forward. We'll also take a, um, a vote to approve the budget, um, at that meeting, and then we begin the self-evaluation, the school committee's self-evaluation process.
Which I'm really excited about this year, since we sort of went through the evaluation and tried to make it a little more applicable to our committee and our situation on Nantucket, our district. Thank you very much. Subcommittee work, does anyone have anything? Safety and security, you covered that policy, we need to set up a meeting.
We have one coming up on the... No, it's the following, you didn't confirm that.
I did, not, so, okay.
So, maybe we don't.
No, that's okay. Just let me know Thursday at 8:00 AM?
No, it wasn't at 8:00 because I have the superintendent's coffee that day.
Okay, you must have got that email, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll get an email out tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Can you just ask Mike to give you an update on the strategic plan?
Yes, sure. Strategic plan, could you give us an update on that?
Right, right now?
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit before. We had a, um, a meeting scheduled with the facilitators. We have, um, a list of anywhere from six to 10, um, or more people for each of the focus areas. Mary Ann Hedda is, will be the facilitator, and, um, she would like to schedule some time with the, um, two administrators that will be facilitating each group. I have tentatively put each of the school committee members on a focus area, and I will send that out, can send that out to you tomorrow, tomorrow. But that's really up to the committee to decide which ones that you want to be on. But I tried to match it up with what I thought you might be interested in, in doing. So, I will send that out tomorrow.
Great. Any questions?
TA negotiations continue along.
I do.
All right, and do you want to give us an update on Director for Community School, where we're at?
Sure. We have, um, interviewed some candidates, we are bringing two candidates, um, back in for a second interview. There are still some candidates, um, that have expressed interest, but that the, um, committee hasn't interviewed yet. I don't think that we will meet our goal of having somebody onboard February 1st, but we had said that that goal isn't more important than who the person is, that the timeline's not more important than, than the match. So, we are continuing that search. We have a, I think, a very strong committee, um, that represents two members of the, um, of the community school, um, two members of the administration, um, Pauline is the school committee representative, and we have two, um, community partners that, um, have worked a lot with community schools, so it's a, it's a strong group.
That's great, thank you. Any updates, Natalie?
Um, not much. Um, we, the student council has a couple of things coming up, we're looking to plan some more assemblies, and, um, we're actually going to start working with, um, some community members to do a food pantry fundraiser that's going to turn into like a, it's like a weekend for students who, you know, it's like a take-home, um, weekend, like bag, for students that need food on the weekends, and...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, it's going to be awesome. And then we're also, um, going to start working with Janet Schulte to get a job fair going for student, summer employment for students, so.
Fantastic.
Lot to look forward to.
That's great. I have to say, I went to the December Follies, is that what you called it? The December...
Variety show?
Variety show. That was fantastic. I don't know if anyone else had the opportunity to go, but it was so amazing to see the talent on stage. I mean, I was crying at times, I was laughing, it was incredible, it was, I was so proud of everybody up there. You guys did a great job.
The Spanish club does a great job with that.
Yeah.
And Ms. Supran, she's the one who runs it, so.
It was fantastic, I think there should be more of that, it was so, so much fun. Thank you. Any other?
We have Winterfest coming up Thursday, right, which is, is it all of the vocational classes?
Art, music, vocational, and then it's followed with poetry out loud at 6:00 with English.
Five to seven, is that correct?
Yeah.
And tonight was math night for the intermediate school, and I wanted to go so badly, uh, it was 5:30 to 6:30, it was, it looked like a full house, so hopefully they had a good turnout. Um, and can you just talk about January 29th, um, what Kelly and Sarah Dan?
Jen asked a question today about the, um, protected status, the ending, the protected status of El Salvadorans, and Kelly, um, immediately got out an email to, um, the administration and to staff. But she has lined up a, on January 29th, an opportunity for, I think it's two, but it might be more, um, immigration lawyers...
Five.
Five now.
Oh my...
Five immigration lawyers are coming over, um, and will be here to answer questions that our constituents have, I think it's a great response, um, to that. We had actually planned it earlier, and they weren't able to come. Excuse me, which is probably a good thing, given that this now has come out, and the questions will be even more, um, pointed, and, so...
They had the first one, people came still, they still gave a... But they just couldn't beat the lawyers face-to-face to have any answers to that one first. So, it kind of worked out, so they had the general presentation, and now they'll have more specific.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, thank you. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.